Be planning commission meeting for October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Roll call, please, Ryan.
Evans is absent. Madamore?
Here.
Is there white? O'Toole?
Here.
Priscillik?
Here.
Schneider is absent. And Moody?
Here.
Okay, we got enough to do business. So are there any changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Second from Donald. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Alright. Agenda approved. Um. So, um, we have some minutes here. Uh, for October fourteenth. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I can't do it. I wasn't here.
That's right, Donald or Sylvie?
I mean.
Okay, uh, so is there a second?
Second. You're, I could second.
You can second, okay. Um, so it's just Sylvie, Donald and myself, and so we'll have enough to to move it through. Um, all those in favor of approving the October fourteenth minutes, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay, nays. Okay, we got the three we needed. Um, minutes are approved as presented. And next on the agenda are citizen comments on non-agenda related items, uh, no action or topics, no action will be taken. Citizen comments, is there? Come on up to the, to the podium and state your name and.
Have you heard the fight? It's not again.
I'm only just signed in.
Oh, great.
He's way ahead of us.
For you to call my name, sir.
Well, you don't have to tell us what your name is. I guess it's Ed.
Well, then I can, I can do something else then, can't I?
Okay.
Uh, Chairman Moody and members of the planning commission, my name's Ed Consel. And I'm a Laramie resident. Uh, just to give you a little my background, since two thousand nineteen, I've been working on Laramie's carbon neutrality resolution by twenty fifty, if you're familiar with that. And I've also been working to promote the emissions reduction plan, which was just passed uh, by city council. And through my membership and position as an officer for the Alliance for Renewable Energy in Laramie, uh, that's A R E is the way it's normally referred to. I've helped Laramie secure blue sky grants for the installation of solar on various city buildings, including the rec center. Uh, the reason I wanted to talk to you today is, um, I had a rather interesting experience at Farmer's Market because planning commission had a booth and in the booth was a developer and I started talking to the developer. He wanted public input on a project. And after talking to him and looking at the various versions, um, I learned that it's called the Fourth Street Redevelopment Project. It's on city property. And it appears to have absolutely no provisions for renewable energy or the inclusion of solar in the project. This development on the eastern side of North Fourth, as you drive north on Fourth, it's between Canby and Shields, it's where the old city off, uh, buildings are, where they used to do the repairs and storage and everything. Um, this could be a dynamic showcase for future developments in Laramie. And I've given you an information sheet with some of the suggestions that come from our work with renewable energy and solar. Um, things like suggesting in projects like these that all units are all electric. Designing the buildings and building the roofs, strong enough for solar panels and oriented for maximum solar exposure. Locating vents on roofs to maximize the area available for solar panels. One of the problems run into when you try and put solar on buildings are the vents that are scattered around on the roofs. Some other suggestions would be installing solar on all units, uh, before they're sold. Five to seven kilowatts for residential and up to twenty five kilowatts for commercial units. Uh, separate electric meters for each unit. This allows net metering to be considered. And some of the other considerations to go into these, um, rooms for either the commercial and the residential. Tankless water heaters, heat pumps and E V charging stations because those weren't considered either according to the contractor. The reason I'm concerned about these is we have a resolution. We have an emissions reduction plan. And this property does not include the requirements that would allow a lot of the considerations in those two things to be met. Thirty percent rebate under I R A and other federal grant sources are also available. So thank you for allowing me to speak on this. If you have questions on either handout, uh, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions from commission? Donald?
I have a question. Um, isn't the development company, and this question is directed at Derek. Uh, isn't it, uh, a five oh one C three?
Yes.
So doesn't that make it eligible to get some Biden funding for sustainable green? Uh. Uh. Energy for the building. Aren't there grants available for this? And has that been the subject of discussion?
So there could be. I, I don't know for sure. Uh, we have discussed some of these concepts with the developer, but at this point, we're so early on in the process. We, they're just trying to figure out the basics of even phasing right now. And so we've not pursued grants. We have not done anything like that. So that's kind of what I can tell you at least right now.
Has it been any discussions or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I thought there was, uh, there is money available for this specifically for whatever they're called, uh, five oh one C threes. Uh, and where they were planning on having, whatever the technical term is, but affordable housing for folks who are trying to get on the property ladder.
I mean, there, there very well could be. Like I said, I just, I, as much as I would love to know every grant that could go after, I just don't. I mean, I, I mean, it'd be something that we would look into though, of course. Um, so. Yeah.
Okay. So, so Derek, when, when would this topic sort of be burrowed down into in greater detail? Um, would it, would that eventually come to the planning commission at some point in time? Or is it, you know, talking to Jay about solar things or, you know, what's the, what would be a follow through, a follow up on, on this, on Ed's concern?
So I'll speak pretty preliminarily right now, considering this is kind of the first I'm hearing about this, right? I'd like, you know, specifically this. So one, we have given it thought. It's not something that hasn't been given thought. Um. The priority is affordable housing. So we, that was kind of the focus of the R F P and the R F Q. Uh, that was guidance by council, right? Um, we have started working with Jay Smith in our, in the city to start thinking about these things because the really the appropriate time when that'll come is through the site planning process is what it's called. And so during that time is when we would be looking at things like, you know, are they going to incorporate, you know, how's it heated? How is, you know, where's the parking? Where's stormwater going? Where's, you know, that's where they would incorporate solar panels or things like that. And so, um, they are aware that those are things that we would like to see. Um, but also we are balancing affordable housing and the directive there with all the other things, whether it's parks and recreation required needs, you know, uh, alternative energy needs, the resolution that Ed's talking about here. And so, um, you know, we're think, we're working on that and that's when it would come. Uh, I, unless they'd for some reason need to go through a conditional use, which I don't believe that that's where they would be going through. Um, it will not come before the planning commission for consideration. Um, it would just, it's an administrative process, so.
Okay. Tom?
Are we not the Solar Panel Board of Review anymore? I thought this body was.
You, you are the Solar Board of Appeals.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
And no, and I think it's a, it's a great, this is a good question though. I mean, I think so. Solar Board of Appeals, um, under statute and under Laramie municipal code, we've built in a process to allow someone to legally establish a right to solar access so that their, so that their solar access is protected. And so, um, you would be the board that would review that and ensure that we're following code and following statute related to that. And so, uh, those items would come before you if they chose to do that. Um. Most people that are putting solar panels in are not requesting legal protections for their solar access. It's up to them whether they do that or not.
That's like if someone put up a three story home that was shadowing their, their collector.
Yeah, there's, and that's kind of what the intent is, is that if you put a huge investment in like solar panels, that you're not going to get it, uh, taken away. Now, it doesn't give you a hundred percent protection, but it protects you against some of the like kind of logical things that you would experience and not someone purposefully trying to take your solar away is brilliantly, is kind of what that is built into, so. Um, so it's something you could see, I guess, if they wanted to do that.
Right, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Donald, you have a question?
There's another question, just, just a comment. Um, I read the R F P and I hesitate to compliment Derek on a really well-written R F P, but some of the language in it included, uh, consideration for incorporating sustainable practices such as implementation of green infrastructure. And there was other interesting language in there talking about sustainable development and carbon neutrality aligning with urban principles. And the, the other comment you put in there was, um, this was an opportunity for this development and hopefully without screwing up, you didn't use this phrase, screwing up, uh, affordable housing would be a benchmark of exemplary development. And I think trying to get solar incorporated into this building would be wonderful.
Yeah, and Chair, I think, I think that what's important about this project too is, is that we do, we do hope that this is something that can showcase, I think was the term I used. You didn't mess it up that bad. Um, but showcase what can be done with development. And our hope is too, is that it's a example for that whole neighborhood. And maybe future projects that aren't even run or owned by the city, right? Um, there's, most of the land up there is not controlled or owned by the city of Laramie. And so we simply have an opportunity and, and right now we're looking at kind of phase one of three phases that will probably see if everything goes great, you know, over the next tenish years. So I think, you know, we're going to have multiple kind of like takes at this project as it continues to, to move forward, so.
Alright, thank you Derek. Any other questions from commission? Seeing none.
Chair, just really quick, Ed, did you give that to, does Ryan have a copy?
I.
Or would you, or would you like email us a copy just so we have it all?
I've got, we've had some coffees.
Oh, we do? Okay, cool.
Yeah, 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 too.
Send it, send it my way. Yeah, that'd be good. Just so we have it. That'd be good. Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Consel.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um. Any other public comment on non-agenda related topics? Seeing none. Uh, next is, uh, planning commission and staff reports and comments. Derek, any, Philip, anything you guys want to say? Yeah, Ryan?
We actually have one more member that raised their hand on Zoom. So I can admit them into the room.
Public comment.
Yeah, one more public comment.
Where?
You don't see it up there, but I have it.
Oh, okay. All right, well, mystery person, you're up. What do you got, Ryan? What's, uh?
Ah, there's somebody.
Oh, Jamie. Yeah, state your name and, and, um.
Hi, um. Trying to get the video to go. There we go. Hi, I'm Jamie Egaugh. Uh-oh, I don't know what just happened. Can you still see me?
Can't see you, but we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, I'd just like to applaud the city for such a great sounding project and, um, I also would like to, uh, know what Ed said about adding renewable energy to it. I think is to be an outstanding um, feat for the city of Laramie and, and it could act as, uh, uh, you know, a showcase for other cities even. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Okay, any other public comment? Out there hiding about? Seeing none, um, we'll, we'll go to staff comments.
Yes, honorable chair, members of the commission, um, I'd like to introduce the newest member of our team this evening. Uh, Ms. Emma Dixon comes to us. She's a UW grad, uh, recently the events manager at the Albany County Tourism Board. Uh, today was her first day and she had the great fortune of having a planning commission on her first day. So I'd like to invite her up and introduce herself.
Hi, Emma.
Thank you for having me, Honorable, um, Planning Commission. Um, I'm happy to be here. I'm originally from Lawrence, Kansas, came out here to attend the University of Wyoming. And then I've now been here six years and I'm currently pursuing my master's in remote sensing and mapping. So I'm really excited to be here. I love doing all the outdoor recreation opportunities that Laramie has to offer and getting out downtown. So excited to be sticking around in the community and getting even more deeply immersed.
So, so what, what's your position again?
I'm Planner One.
Oh, oh, and planning in the planning department, okay. Planner One. All right.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
So, so Joe's still here? You, you just have, have one, one additional member of the planning commission?
Correct. Yep, we just have another planning staff member. Joseph's still here. He's watching online tonight, so.
Oh, Joe.
Yes, uh.
Share the workload, that's what you need.
We're, we're hoping that the, the added staff allows us to get some things, some other projects done and get some things beyond just some of the current planning that we've been really focused on probably in the last like four or five years, so.
We know who's going to be doing all the work now. Alright, thank you. Alright, any other comments, any comments from commissioners? Alright, seeing none, we'll, um, move on to disclosures, ex parte communications and potential conflict of interest for agenda items. Any commissioners with problems?
I've got problems, but on this, I've got.
Thank you, thank you, Donald. We appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to the first order of, uh, of business here. It's F P dash twenty four dash oh five. Indian Heights Second Edition Final Plat. Derek?
Chair and commission, um, the item before you is a final plat for the Indian Heights Second Edition. Um, the Indian Heights Second Edition is a fifteen lot residential subdivision and an R one, which is a single family zoning district. Um, the applicant is Grant Lindstrom of, of Lindy LLC. Um, he is here this evening. Uh, so is his engineer, uh, Christie Roberts with Whewell. Um. Staff is recommending approval of this final plat, um, as presented here. Um, just a little bit of, uh, s- some history behind this. Uh, there was a similar preliminary plat in the same area called Indian Ridge. Uh, that preliminary plat started in the two thousand and ten and kind of ran quite for some time until, uh, the fourth filing of Indian Ridge. Then after it expired, a new preliminary plat called the Indian Heights Subdivision, which is the one you're, uh, considering this final plat under, was applied for in two thousand and one. And, uh, really scaled back some area of the, um, development area found in the original Indian Ridge preliminary plat. Um, we've seen already one final plat related to the Indian Heights subdivision due south of this. Um, it's kind of the existing homes that are mostly constructed in that area. And this is a final plat that will extend and kind of complete out, um, this north, most northeastern corner really of the city. Um. A few things to note, you're going to see the future extension of Indian Hills Drive as well as Forty Fifth Street, uh, kind of terminating at the city boundary. Um, and then you will also see, uh, Mohican Drive installed, which is an east west street providing kind of access to the residential lots. Uh, overall, uh, fairly straightforward subdivision, uh, it's kind of one large block area. I will point out just a couple of quick things. Um, Forty Fifth Street is, uh, is a collector's street in the major street plan. Over the years, some changes have been made primarily related to the physical construction of Forty Fifth Street. If you're familiar with this project in this area, you'll see some islands in Forty Fifth Street kind of further to the south. Um, long term and prior to this preliminary plat occurring, uh, we believe that Forty Fifth Street was going to be the beginning and a portion of a large beltway around the kind of, uh, eastern and northern portion of the community. However, uh, during that same time, Pilot Hill really started to gain steam. And finally, with the actual dedication and all the completion of that project, uh, the realization that Forty Fifth was no longer going to provide that, that real large, uh, traffic volume, uh, street that would connect all the way into Grand Avenue. Uh, we revisited this idea of putting in islands and things. And so you see that, just a difference that I want to point out. Uh, we always, I feel like we always get a question about it, and so that's why I'm bringing it up. This subdivision doesn't have any of that, but it still does plan for Forty Fifth Street to be a collector and still move traffic if needed, uh, because it will be probably one of the largest streets on that kind of eastern edge of the community. Um. The subdivision also will, uh, address parks and rec. Um, with this project, you, they are required to provide a park in Luffy. Uh, for this final plat, the park in Luffy that'll be provided, the city prior to city council is ten thousand dollars, three hundred and forty seven and seventy five cents. And so, um, that will kind of complete out the park's requirements. Finally, I'll just note, uh, this final plat is not located within the Casper Rock for Protection Area. Um, just so you know, at the time of the approval of the preliminary plat, it was located. Now it is not, uh, following, what was that, about eight months ago when uh, the city adopted the new boundary based upon the new updated Casper Rock for Protection Plan. Overall, all the lots and blocks and plating, uh, meet zoning requirements. Um, the drainage for the area largely kind of travels to the south and is handled by regional detention. Uh, south of this subdivision, uh, the property and the lots are adequately served by water and sewer. Um. And fire and emergency access is provided. I'll also note, um, as part of the preliminary plat approval, there was a no blasting agreement required. Um, in some previous subdivisions, blasting occurred up in that area and there were lots of problems. And so, uh, during the Indian Heights and Indian Ridge preliminary plat, that was a requirement of the preliminary plat and they provided us that agreement, so. Um, aside from that, uh, all the conditions of the preliminary plat have been met. Uh, we did do mailed notice and posted notice of the property uh, to meet all the requirements there as well as published in the Laramie Boomerang. And so, um, we've received no public comments related to this final plat. And so with that, I would be happy to take any questions. As I mentioned, the applicant and applicant's engineer is available. Um, probably if you have any questions also for them, so.
Thank you, Derek. Uh, any questions from commission from, for Derek? Tom?
Uh, just point of curiosity, I've driven the road, the, uh, fire access road to the, uh, to the secondary fire access road. Uh. It says they're going to do the engineering and improve the road because currently it doesn't meet standards. Uh. Is, and it says it, in order to, my concern about it is it's going to draw four wheelers and dirt bikers and bicycles and they're going to probably run it up or washboard it. Is there any way to control access to it? They would still allow it to be used as a fire access road?
Yeah, Chair and Commission, the, the road I believe you're discussing is kind of, there's that east west gravel road that kind of runs there.
Runs up over the top of.
So, so that road, that road meets our requirements and, and is doing what it's supposed to for our fire access, secondary fire access. Um, that road is put in there in case you see some sort of kind of like, I call it kind of like a cataclysmic accident where like a major road is blocked and you can't get into that northern portion of town. There's another way to get in there. Um, in the agreement, if there were like major issues or something like that, there are maintenance components to the agreement. And so that's how that would be addressed. Um, our fire department goes and looks at that periodically and kind of pays attention to it. And that's why we put those agreements in place. So if it has to be regraded or pothole fixed or something, we can do that, so.
So that's an access that would come in from the north of this?
No, it's already there. It's kind of runs east west from Indian Hills to, and I think it connects.
From Shoney to, uh.
Yeah.
Uh. Arrow or Rappahoe or somewhere down in the A Streets.
Yeah. And so it's a little bit further, it's a little bit to the south of this there. Kind of goes up over the hill and then across the prairie there.
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's all I have.
Any other questions for Derek? And we'll see if the, does the applicant want to come up and, and, and talk or?
We're available for comments.
Okay. Any, any comments for the applicant commissioners? Okay, seeing, seeing none, um. Uh. Public comment, is there any, any, any public comment out here on this final plat? Seeing none, final discussion with commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to recommend the city council approve the Indian Heights Second Edition Final Plat based on findings and fact and conclusions of law. Do I have to go through all the code sections? And read them into the record?
No.
Alright, then I'll let that stand as a motion.
Second. Second from Donald? Final discussion on it? On the motion? Seeing none, roll call?
Evans, absent. Madamore?
Aye.
Is there white?
Aye.
O'Toole?
Aye.
Priscillik?
Aye.
Schneider, absent. And Moody?
Aye.
That's five yeses, zero noes, two absent.
Okay, final plat approved. Go get them. Okay, next, uh. Well, we need to, um, adjourn as as planning commission. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move the planning commission meeting be adjourned. And we reconvene as, uh, the Board of Adjustment.
Is there a second?
Sam?
Oh, long range projects?
I mean, I see not any, but I wish probably at least acknowledge it. I don't know.
Okay. Seven, okay. Uh, long range planning projects, there are none? And so we'll, we'll move on to Tom's motion. I'm a skipper. Um. Tom's motion to, um, adjourn and reconvene as Board of Adjustment, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Donald. All those in favor of adjournment and reconvening, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, we are now Board of Adjustment. Um, the first item in front of us is V A R dash twenty four dash oh two, Y O Tech Temporary Car Storage Variance Request from Sections of Laramie Municipal Code, fifteen dot ten, uh, comma fifteen dot fourteen and fifteen dot eighteen. Derek?
Uh, Chair, if we could, uh, first swear in our witnesses, if there are any, um, anyone who needs, who would like to speak or potentially testify would just need to be sworn in. So if you want to do that first, then I'll get into my discussion.
If you wish to provide testimony on, on this variance, um, you need to be sworn in. Is there anybody out there?
Just raise your hand.
Yeah, okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, you're sworn in. Right on. Alright, Derek, now, now we're all swearing.
We're, we're all, we have all sworn. Oh, I don't think that's actually what. Oh, I don't think that's actually what we're supposed to say. Chair, Board of Adjustment, before you is a request, VAR twenty-four oh-two, this is a request by YOTech and a request for a temporary car storage variance. This would allow, if approved, to allow for YOTech to store for up to four years student, student project cars in a storage area to the south of Venture Drive. It's located on YOTech property, but just not located adjacent or core to the campus. This is a fairly unique variance, to be honest. We just don't get many requests from our educational institutions, either UW or YOTech or LCCC making requests, usually. They're, I guess I'm going to say, the, the services they provide to their students largely are found kind of quarter their campus, I call it, often meeting requirements, and so when we get these requests, often they're fairly unique, and in this case, what you'll see is actually kind of a litany of multiple sections of code that, in order to approve this variance, you would have to give relief from. Largely, these are not lots of separate code sections because of the, it's just because of the request and what they're making the request for and why it accompany, or why it it lands in all these different code sections, and so if you're unfamiliar, Laramie, Laramie Technology School or YOTech really is a, it's an automotive technology school located over in West Laramie, kind of off of Venture Drive in Colorado. Right now, the primary campus is located north of Venture Drive. Starting kind of on the western side, you have a series of dormitories associated with YOTech, closest to Colorado. And as you move to the east, you have a series of classroom buildings that facilitate the automotive technologies that they provide to the students. Most recently, they performed a large expansion on one of their buildings, about ninety thousand square feet to the north, and essentially doubled the capacity of their services that they're providing, and just one of their automotive technology buildings there. Kind of with that expansion, and some of the more recent changes that we've seen at YOTech over, say, the last seven to eight years, YOTech has been in quite a few discussions with city staff about the future expansion and the future of YOTech. YOTech owns all of the property located south of Venture Drive and east of Colorado and west of Adams Street. If you're familiar with that area, there's a large field essentially that's south of Venture Drive. And if you look across that field to the south, there's some houses, they own everything there. During that time, the city of Laramie has been working with YOTech to develop some campus planning for them. Their growth, and I'll kind of let them, I think, speak to this, because I think they're going to have a lot better, better knowledge, and they have better understanding of their operations. But as they've continued to expand and grow, their need to provide additional dormitory facilities, recreation facilities, storage, parking, and largely more classroom space for more types of instruction is really now kind of the focus of that area to the south of campus, and so as they've done expansion, one of the things that they've seen is more students. And with more students in an automotive technology college, they bring vehicles to work on. And so a couple of years ago, what had started happening is the Laramie Police Department was having significant issues with vehicles that didn't have engines, you know, that didn't have parts, that might have run, might not have run, whatever the case, right? Being located on city streets. And YOTech, along with the Laramie Police Department, started to try to figure out a solution, largely that being, how do we store vehicles in a place that generally is off, off the street? So not creating the problems for this, the general public, or a safety concern if it's parked incorrectly or something like that. But also allows students access to the vehicles, and so through that, PD and YOTech constructed kind of just a temporary space to the south of their campus. It's actually the space that we're talking about today. At the time, it just wasn't known that that was something that did need to go through a process and establish a use. Storage lots are considered a use in our code. We don't allow them just anywhere. In this zoning district, it is an allowed use, so something that we can allow. They have turned in a site plan and this variance request, basically to allow for a storage lot only for student vehicles and their use back on campus, so they kind of go into the space, pull them out, use it on campus, take them back in there. It's a, it's off of like a gravel road, essentially off of Venture Drive, which is a paved road, city street. And then is restricted with a covered chain link fence and gates, so that there's restricted access into there. What is unique about this is that in this space, really, we just don't have many users that really need this much space for vehicles, unless there happened to be one of these like, kind of like automotive industry type things, like a wrecking yard or something, and so with this process, what we did is we discussed with YOTech kind of, what do we do? And through that discussion, we felt that putting a time limit on a project like this, but also the extensive campus planning that we've been working on and their future desire to build a permanent code-compliant space, made sense for us to try to assist Laramie Police Department in getting vehicles off the street, as well as providing some time for YOTech to work through their master plan and get to a point where that they can start to consider this kind of more formal space once they've got the details out. Really, in discussions with them, and I, and I'll let their representatives speak to this a little bit, is that, you know, we're a little, just a little bit early on, like, landing the exact future location of the permanent car storage space, and so because of that, this kind of gives us some time, really, and so if you look in the, the staff report, what we've done is I kind of spelled out the different sections of code that, that really apply, and and largely what I would say is this. The, a storage area that was going to be compliant is going to have a paved driveway, which this does not. It would have permanent landscaping around the perimeter of the site, which, which it does not. And then it would have a fully screened opaque, is what we call it in code, fencing style that fully restricts the view into the fenced area. Aside from that, you do have some other sections of code that would apply, but largely what you see here, those are kind of like the primary things that is a difference between a compliant and non-compliant storage area. We did look at this, though, to ensure that the access onto Venture Drive didn't create any unsafe situations. There are some site triangles and some things like that that we want to protect in terms of vehicles coming in and out of that. You know, these vehicles might not be operational, so they could be, be towed or something like that in there, or they, you know, might be driving in with no doors or something, you know, and it's just to make sure that those students are getting safe from the storage area generally across into campus, the main campus, which is on the north side of Venture Drive, so that they can work on their vehicles and do their projects and do their classwork, so. In this area too, one other thing that we would like to point out is with a new site plan, we are looking at this because there's no other uses in this area would require what we call full compliance, right? Like, that would be the normal requirement, and that's why you see these items here listed as to the need for a variance. One of those items too is the construction of Venture Drive. As I mentioned, Venture Drive is a city street. It is fully paved, except there is not curb and gutter on the southern side. However, there is an agreement to complete that construction, along with the remainder of Venture Drive that already exists, which also is a very unique situation here. A lot of times, we wouldn't have an agreement. This was a pre-existing agreement back when the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance owned this property and a portion of the property further to the west or to the east. And so because of that, we have the ability to know that that road will get constructed and that there won't be some sort of use there without those physical improvements ever in the future. Finally, with that, too, if YOTech was ever to move forward with their future plans, which I believe that they hope to do that, classroom buildings, more recreation space, dorms, et cetera, that would also require those of public improvements, which would be more permanent buildings than the storage area. And so with that, we did we did include notice for this, so we send notice to all property owners within three hundred feet. The site is posted, and we do post it in the Laramie Boomerang. At the time of the writing of this report, we did get an application, or we did get a public comment about this project that was not in support of the, of the variance, and then we mailed last week, I think it was on Thursday, another public comment regarding, regarding this not in support of the variance, so. With that, though, we did review this, and we believe that it does meet those findings for a unique situation. Largely because of the campus planning associated with this, we very rarely deal with organizations, even businesses that have any type of planning associated with the future of what they hope to see, and so a lot of times that timeline is very nebulous for us, which is difficult for us when we consider things like maybe a variance related to other parking or storage, or whatever that may be. That definitely was something that was largely discussed with us as staff. Secondly, just the, the other things of, of working with our police department to try to address some issues temporarily within our city streets, and so with that, I would point out, if you take a look at the findings and the recommendations in our motion, we do confirm that that car storage area kind of has to meet the requirements as shown in the plans that are provided. We do note that the, it's for YOTech storage of student project vehicles, so we're not going to see other storage or things like that occurring in that space. There is a four-year timeframe associated with it. We just note that this variance doesn't improve any other uses out there, so it doesn't allow for other things to happen in that, on that property without going through normal site planning or other requirements. And just that any improvement, so there's some basic signage and some fencing things that need to occur up on Venture Drive, that those are done in conjunction with this variance and the site plan that is also submitted, so. In your, in your packet, I did, just so you know, I included a support letter from the Laramie Police Department related to this variance. We indicated in the plans too, just kind of the storage area, as well as some of the general campus planning that they're currently working on. You'll kind of see that, there's some faded lines underneath the proposal that you'll see in the site plan document provided by Coffee Engineering. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, the applicant is here as well, and probably could answer some questions from you, so you have.
Okay. Commissioner, questions for Derek, and, and the applicant will have a shot across the bow of things to address. Tom, you?
Thank you, Chair. My, my only concern with this is you're restricting the use to strictly storage. I'm concerned that they're not going to be in there tearing apart motors or working on Sunday afternoon rebuilding. Or my biggest concern is in a draining oil or antifreeze or rear end fluid onto the dirt there. So the question comes down to is how is access limited, and how is it controlled? And who's going to do that, and how it's, maybe better for the applicant to deal with that one?
Yeah, Chair, I think, I think what the only response I would give is that there, the reason why we specified for storage is so that other activities aren't occurring, because we don't want to see that occurring in that space. I would believe, I don't believe that the applicant does either, but I think that'd be a great, I think I would ask the applicant, I think that they can explain a little bit about how they control that access, how they allow the students to access their vehicles and things like that, and kind of what they're going to be looking for in that space of, you know, the things that you know might happen because vehicles are being stored there, and the nature of the business of YOTech, right? So.
All right, thank you.
Donald? Did no notification go out to the folks in Riverside since they're neighbors? Were they just too far away to send a notice out to them?
No, we did notice to them.
Oh, you did, okay. So you just had one responses or two responses?
We had two responses, yeah, I think both of them, well, the one said Riverside, the other one, I'm not sure, gave us the, I think they just gave us their name. And I don't, I'm, really, the Riverside is the only ones that, that's your residential properties in the area, right? That aren't associated with YOTech, that aren't the dorms, so.
So, so the second one, what was it related to, the, the non-support? You say there were, there were two comments, and we got one in our package.
Yeah, and then we, we emailed the second one.
I didn't see it.
I can, I could read it off really quick.
Yeah.
Would you like that? That'd be good. Yeah.
Well, it's nice, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Well, it's just nice to hear that you didn't get any comment from Game and Fish, given that they're the ones that are right next to this proposed storage lot.
The applicants have spoke with Game and, Game and Fish about what they were doing and have been coordinating with them on that.
Good.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, the first, the first one that we sent to you was from Dolores Bixey, Bixby. That was the one I think you saw. The one that maybe some of you didn't see was from Brian Welsh, he just says, says, "My name is Brian Welsh, I live near YOTech, I oppose the variant. We need better transparency, posting in the boomerang for one day does not reach many people, I'm guessing not many read it every day and don't know what this is about. Two, we are being told this is going to be a storage lot, there is no reason to believe that it is not just moving the mess on Colorado and Venture Streets over behind a fence. There will be students working on cars, and it will be the same as the area last year and the street today. Inoperable car, cars, parts, junk, trash, old batteries, oil, antifreeze, and other liquids drained on the ground. My main concern with the lot is noise at all hours, trash, junk, and harm to the water table. Many properties in the area have wells, and this poses a threat. There's been no oversight by YOTech and no enforcement by the city. In reality, we shouldn't be spending the city's resources babysitting YOTech. YOTech has been a poor neighbor, they have done nothing to try to lessen the impact on the neighborhood. We put up with noise, non-compliant lighting, traffic, and mess, and the mess on Colorado and Venture. I drive by almost every day, and the mess is just a big middle finger to the neighborhood. YOTech does not allow, or YOTech doesn't allow car repair on any of their parking lots, but they're fine with us dealing with it. YOTech is a business partially funded by our tax dollars. They need to do this the right, or the proper way, just like the rest of us. This is contrary to zoning, and they have not earned any special treatment as far as I'm concerned. I recommend reading the original Laramie River Business Park Two Master Plan that was agreed upon and signed by the city, YOTech, and others, to see how far we are from what was sold to us. The good news is this has shown a light on what a mess, what is a mess on our street. If we continue to observe oil and other liquids being drained on the ground and other improprieties, we will be, we will be making a complaint to the regional EPA office. Thank you.
Okay, and, and Dolores Bixby, what, what is she, actually, that was the one that I didn't see, but.
Dolores Bixby says, "Just good morning, Derek, I'm receipt of your letter about this variance, and I feel it's a dollar short and days too late. They, YOTech, have already finished the project, it seems like the city is always behind on notifying concerned residents. Why does YOTech need to have so many cars just sitting around? Most of the students are here to learn, not repair." I will be at the meeting just. I will be at the meeting just, I will not be at the meeting, but just wanting to let you know that you should change whatever it is before construction is started and completed."
All right. No, we appreciate the comments from the two. Any other comments from commissioners to Derek? And then we'll talk to the applicant. Donald?
I can ask this of the applicant, but how did the, the, the period of time, four years, come up? Because I anticipate in four years, I'm going to be between two planks and holding a set of lilies. That's, that's a long time.
I think, I think two parts. One, I would agree, I think a shorter time period is usually best, especially when we're talking about a variance such as this, where you're asking for kind of a temporary use timeline kind of thing. However, I think four years is a realistic expectation when it comes to this large of a pro, campus project, like they're talking about, and really making sure that they cite something properly, which really is kind of the long-term goal we're trying to get to, is that if we can allow them some extra time, but not having to do this maybe again, we can allow for them to really locate that exact spot where they want to do the permanent storage facility and put it in. And you know what we find is that this kind of this stuff takes time, and that, that's really more how we landed on four years. I would say that if you probably asked the applicant, I don't think I'm putting too many words in their mouth, they probably would like a little bit longer than that. I don't, I'm not sure that that's necessarily a good move. I would rather come back to you in four years if we have to, and see how things are going, and, but also build in some time where we're not just back in front of you next year and the next year, maybe making the same request. So.
John?
So, just so that I understand, and I have read this, but so the, the model is that they would temporarily park cars here, and then drive them over to campus each day to work on them, and then drive them back at the end of the day? Or how is it, how is it communicated to you? And then I'm happy to hear from them next, but I guess I'm still a little fuzzy on the temporary car lock.
Yeah. The temporary nature of it is that this isn't a permanent, this isn't the permanent facility that they hope to keep. It's not code compliant, right? It's, doesn't have the right fencing, it's not a paved driveway into there, there's no landscaping, things like that. And that's really the purpose of this temporary, the term temporary associated with it, not that it's not, not related to the use temporary. The vehicles, and I, and I'll, I'll very happy let the applicant kind of speak more to this, but it's not necessarily that these vehicles are coming out like every single day for every single class. These are project cars that a lot of times in their spare time, or for a specific class, they may bring the vehicle over. It's not that you're seeing like a heavy volume of traffic back and forth, but it's a place for them to put the car in a safe place, not on the street, and not like in the parking lot next to the building, or things like that, so that they have access to the vehicles when they need it to do work. But it's not, I would say it's not like you're in and out every class period with the vehicle, because that's where it's parked. It's truly storage, like it's, they work on it on the weekends, or maybe on a vacation day, or in the evening when they don't have class, so.
But they have to take the car to campus.
It's not necessarily a class-related thing, it's a hobby, hobby.
No, it's, it's also for their class cars, yeah. Yeah, it's also for their class cars, yeah. Yeah.
That's important.
For sure. Yeah, it's not like, just like, all extracurricular stuff, is that that's what you're getting at, so.
So, I've got some questions. It, it might have been embedded in here, and I missed it, but that, that there's lighting that is not a, you know, it's not shining light towards the residential area, or, or is, is there going to be, is that storage area going to be lighted i- at night for security purposes?
No, no, currently, there's going to be no lighting, so that there's no, like, kind of extra lighting or visual pieces to that. It's, I mean, lighting doesn't necessarily protect, that's, it's a falsehood out there. It's just because it's lit up, doesn't make it safer. Really, it's more about.
It was more, you know, glare was.
Yeah, and I, and I think that that's largely why they chose not to put in any lighting. If you've been in that area in the evening, actually, I mean, there's just a lot of campus buildings, right? And there is more light than there ever was out there. And so they were cognizant of that. The Wow Tech did some lighting improvements on their dormitory buildings that we worked with them on, that I know that some of the residents did notice as well, at one point. And so that was something, too, I mean, definitely on the radar of Wow Tech to try to reduce those impacts, and I think that's largely why they went away from putting in lighting. Also, the temporary nature, running out power and putting up light poles and things like that, maybe not what they're looking to do, so.
And if you saw, you know, lights in there from 10 o'clock to 2:00 in the morning, you noticed something unauthorized was probably happening.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a signal. The, the fencing, you, you said that, you know, code would be some sort of opaque fencing. So why isn't this fencing opaque? Or is, is it?
It, it's chain link fence with like a mesh on it. And under our code, when we talk about opaque fencing, we consider that solid fencing of some sort. So, you know, wood, vinyl, other solid, like you could make a wall, you know, like a brick wall or something. What, what, what we found is, we get a lot of requests for slats, so those things you saw.
The weave, it's like a weave.
The weave, or the mesh. And what, what we honestly find is, unfortunately, that does not last in the Laramie winters and wind, or the UV rays actually destroy the plastic stuff pretty hard, and they just break out and actually looks pretty bad. And so purely visually, if we need to screen something, we look for those solid fencing requirements, so.
But, but this will be a weave that in, maybe in four years.
This is going to be a mesh, it's the mesh covering, it's like a black tarp kind of that goes on the inside or outside of a fence.
Gotcha, so it's, it's not a weave, it's just, it's a cover. Okay, gotcha.
And, and so you can't see into it, it's, it's largely not visible, and kind of see, I mean, it's not perfect, but, you know, my guess is there will probably be some replacement of that material over the next couple of years, to keep that, you know, fully screened per this requirement, so.
Okay. So, with respect to, to spills, or, you know, could, or, or could there be signage in the interior of that, that really lets the students know repeatedly that this is for storage only, and not working actively on, on the cars?
Yeah, I mean, I think what, what exact signage? I think that'd be a question you could ask for the applicant about being inside, but that's a requirement for us. So if we get complaints that there's, it's now an automotive repair area or something, that's, that's for us. We'll send them an enforcement letter and tell them that needs to stop. I mean, but I think, I think, I would ask the applicant, because I think they have some ideas, and they, they, they have their own procedures and how they operate those things, and I think they can give you some good explanation on that, so.
Any other questions for Derek? Okay, thanks, Derek. Hi, Sylvie.
I'm, I'm wondering, though, that inoperable cars in a lot, that's likely to be, to have leaking fluids, how will that not affect stormwater quality?
Derek, I mean.
I mean, I, I mean, I can't say that if like something leaks, that it's not like, but that's not a real possibility. I mean, it is. I mean, there's no, I, no one should be using a drinking well in that area, all this, that I know of, but, I mean, all those properties are on city water, but you do, you could, I guess, have some wells further in that Riverside area that was, and further to the south. But whether something like that would affect that, I mean.
I mean, I, I, I think it's highly unlikely that you would affect any of the wells there along Riverside Drive, but I think that Sylvie makes a, makes a good point, that, that, you know, preventing or responding properly to a car that just let loose its transmission fluid, or, or that, you know, you have students working on something that they shouldn't be, and, and make, and make a mess there. I mean, I know how young, young students work. I'd, I'd, I'd take a chance if I was in that situation, something really needed to be done. But I could ask the applicant about that.
Yeah, remember, Sylvie, I think I would, let's make sure the applicant addresses that, because I think that, I guarantee that there's something been spilled in the past on campus, and they probably have procedures.
Yeah, yeah, cool.
So, yeah, I think that'd be good to hear from them, so.
And Mr. Welch, Brian Welch, in his letter said, "My main concern is the lot of noise at all hours, trash, junk, and harm to the water table. Many properties in the area have wells, and this poses a threat." Is that not true?
I mean, those.
Are they illegal wells?
There could be.
Well, I, I, I know quite a bit about.
I was, I was going to say, we, we do have somewhat of a expert sitting in front of us at the moment on, on.
There's, there's, there's.
Yeah.
Shallow alluvia wells, and, and slightly deeper wells along Riverside. In fact, Dolores Bixby is, is a well owner that I've interacted with. So, yeah, I, I, I think it's a legitimate concern, and, and it's just something that, that should be addressed in, in the course of what goes on in that, in that storage lot. And, and, and the cities, you know, the city wants to do inspections every so often to see if the, you know, if the ground is horribly stained, and, you know, maybe they need to scrape some of that stuff off, and have a periodic, take a look every six months, or something like that. Oh, anyways.
That's, okay.
Yeah. Tom?
Just to point out, being an obtuse fellow, the cars that are leaking are already leaking on Colorado Boulevard, and the stormwater is washing them into the stormwater system. So I could see where they want to get them off Colorado, as long as they can maintain control over this new parking lot, I think, six of one, half a dozen of the other.
Yeah, I think from stormwater, getting it off of the paved surfaces where it drains makes, makes sense, and I think, but there is two, two separate issues, whether you're affecting the water table, or, or drainage into the storm, the stormwater system, where I don't think that this lot is, as you, as you say, Tom, is a stormwater issue, but it, it, it should be part of a general, you know, standard of care with respect to surface, serviceability.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Any other questions from Commissioner for Derek? Okay, can the, can we, can the applicant come, come up and? Just state your name, so we know who we're talking to.
I'm David Kuhn, I'm the Director of Facilities at Wow Tech.
And I'm Kyle Morris, I'm the President out of Wow Tech.
Okay. The Commissioners, if you guys don't want to say anything in general, we'll just, you'll just field questions. Okay, any, any questions from Commissioners at this, at this point? Donna?
It's like a general description on your vision for how students such, that's more detailed than some.
So part of the background that Derek explained was, this was a, a project lot, because most students come to Wow Tech hoping to work on their favorite car, and they only have a couple of weeks during the phase they can work on a project outside their curriculum. So in the meantime, they can't store that car on our campus, because we don't have enough parking for it. We've told them we prefer they don't bring those cars and projects, but they still bring them anyway, because they're young aspiring mechanics and wannabes. So in cooperation with the police department, because they were working on their cars out on the street, we decided, we tried to figure out a place to store. Complete apology for how long it's taken to get a place there that we could secure, but when you ask the questions, are they going to be able to work on their cars in that lot? That is not what we have intended. It'll be a secured lock with a lock on the gate. We just finished the gates the last couple of weeks, and now we can secure those kids, so they can't be in there. There is no reason to have it lit at night to encourage anybody from working on it, it is just basically for those projects. And it might be a rail car they started with their father, and maybe a car they blew up on the way out here, but they can't have it on our dorms, and they can't have us on our campus, so.
And in, in reference to your, your earlier question specifically about if they're coming back and forth daily, you know, take my project here and bring it back, a more, much more typical use for this is going to be, our, our programs are nine months in length, and typically, a student is going to spend the first six months of their program in what we call a, a core area of study. A lot of that is competency-based, and it's working on training aids and, and things that we have. It's, there's not a ton of opportunity to work on a project, per se, but in the last three months of training, you might be in chassis fabrication, or street rod, or, or a, a class that gives you an opportunity to work on kind of your passion project. And so a lot of our students are coming from, you know, 500 miles away, 1,000 miles away, and when they move out, if they trailer out a vehicle, like Dave said, we don't have a, an extra parking spot for them, we don't have those, and so, you know, going back to, to what Derek said, they were winding up on the street, or, you know, inoperable, just, just sitting there. This gives an opportunity for a student to bring their project on day one, and then register that with us. And so that's, that's part of this process, too, is they have to get a tag from us that says, "This is a project that I intend to work on in this class." And then that project can go behind locked doors in this storage lot, and then when they get into that class, they can come and say, "Okay, it's time for me to get that." And then the idea there would probably be, I haul that over to the shop for six weeks, and I work on it, and it stays in the shop for six weeks. And hopefully, if my project goes well, it's done, and it's ready, and, you know, it's beautiful, and it's everything that I dreamed for, and then the student is graduating, and they're hauling the, the project away at that point.
Yeah. It's not intended to be a work lot whatsoever. So to address the leaking parts of that, if they're not working on it, if it wasn't leaking when they brought it, it shouldn't be leaking. It shouldn't be, but we don't condone it, but we do have oil dry in every one of our shops by the pallet. If they have a leak that has in a car, when they're working on it in the shops, they have full access to all the pre-floor dry they need. So we teach that in our curriculum, that they're supposed to be, you know, good players in that whole system if something's leaking. And so it's not like we promote it, we discourage it, and we address it if it happens. The fact that they won't be working on it should not be an issue. There shouldn't be any loud music playing over there, there shouldn't be any light, lights late at night, it's a storage lot. It's not a parking lot, it's not a place that we condone working on it, and the fact that we didn't have it secured was probably part of the concern in the past. But now that we can secure it, they have to go through their coordinator to get that project unlocked, they're tagged, they're inventoried, and now they have to go get their coordinator to go unlock that gate and get their project out. That's been our intention from the beginning, we just didn't have a place we could secure that. So we went ahead and built a temporary fence around it, because it is not permanent. In our future plans, that is completely, that's a paved lot that's supposed to be parking for our main administration building, it's not even going to be there. Have we found a great place on that site yet, that we really think it'd be a great place that would be friendly to the neighbors? We haven't found that yet, but we're still working those, those details out. But it is not intended to be anything more than a project storage lot, so.
Well, I mean, this is a vast improvement, I think, for the community to have the cars off the street, you know, it's so completely in support of, of what you're doing, at least in, in my mind, it's a, it's a huge improvement, but.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, so, a- a- again, just to, to Sylvie's point of spillage, you know, of, of a car that's parked in there, and it's tagged and registered and all that good stuff, but, but it still is leaking, so you've got like a dry clay, what do you have, like, like, like if there was just a vehicle that just was leaking all the time for whatever reason, is there like a pillow or something that, that the kid could, could put under, under the car and just say, you know, this, this is a problem car for whatever reason, fluid-wise, and we can get something under it to contain and catch?
So we have pig mats in all the shops, in case they have a leak, or a comp car that's leaking, or they didn't repair it, right? It could be leaking. So they have pig mats and oil dry available, so if we have that situation, you bet, we can educate everybody that takes a car over there, that if you have an issue and you know of it prior to it going in there, we'll issue you a pigment. I mean, we have the ringers to ring them back out, we burn all that waste oil on site, so it's not like it's a hard, hard thing to solve.
And the other thing is, again, on the, the front end, we are, we're taking a, we issue a permit for that as a project vehicle that fits within the curriculum, so it's not like this is a car that blew the engine yesterday, and now I'm going to throw it in the project lot and let it, you know, soak the field. This is somebody that said, "This is my street rod project," and we take a look at that and say, "Okay, here's a permit for you to go put that in the project lot and pull it back out when it's time to do your street rod project."
And if part of the permit had something, you know, your vehicle will not be leaking, you'll, you'll, you'll address. And if part of the permit had something, you know, your vehicle will not be leaking, you'll, you'll, you'll address leaks and, and immediately and. You know, per, and, and, you know, the city can come in if need be to take a look at it if, yeah, I don't know, you know.
Absolutely. It's been a great relationship with the city and. We're more than happy if they want to come look or anybody wants to come look anytime. We don't deny that. I mean, we invite the fire department to our campus twice a year just because we're proactive in fire prevention and safety. So we have no issues with. Anybody, if they really want to come onto our lot, we're more than happy to have them.
Okay, great. Sylvie, did, did this address your concerns?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, cool. Any other, uh, Donald? This is, this is going to sound like a really stupid question and obviously missing something here, but. Is, is it not possible at this stage to identify an area? That can act as the permanent lot for these vehicles? And, and just get that done within the next year?
It's a great question. One, we don't have the infrastructure yet over on that 70 acres. There is no water sewer or power over there. Um, currently. And second of all. We're still. A business in development. So we have a great idea what we want. But it's $465 million. So we don't know how that's going to actually look in the final product, just because. We don't have a complete idea where we're heading, what the student base is driving us to do. So. Currently, we're talking about welding, advanced diesel and off-road construction equipment in a new entity. That wasn't in our original plan five years ago, but the industry has driven us to that. So now we're having to develop a campus. We still have the same kind of configuration for the buildings, but we're having. Second thoughts about some of the programs we were going to put where and how they actually would fit into what our original master plan said. So with that said, we've got a park that we had talked about Todd Fieser on the southwest corner of the property. And we're still all in favor of that, but in order to do the parking and readjust everything through copying associates. We're going to have these bigger parking lots to try to accommodate all these students and all these parking lots, retention ponds and drainage and that type of stuff. So we don't know yet how that's all going to be configured. And we kind of look at the project lot as you bet, it's, it's a priority, but we just don't know where it fits in. To work the best for us and for the community. We hate to put something out there and then have to tear it all back up and move it.
And, and I understand that. And, and YOTech is, is an important part of the community and brings a lot of. Students to the community and so on. It's just that, uh. It seems like, uh, we've received two comments from neighbors. Both comments are critical of YOTech and, uh. That says a lot.
And I've invited. Everybody and anybody that's had any concerns, because we have people that walk their dogs across there. They obviously take pictures. They're running around there and I've talked to several of them and said, you're more than welcome to come through our campus. We'd invite you to come take a look at anything we've got going. We're about as transparent as they get. The last thing we want to be is bad neighbors. You look at the community service that our kids provide, the 18,000 community service hours a year. We want to be good neighbors. We, we practice that. We're also dealing with 18 and 19 and 20 year old kids. And just like you stated, you don't always know what they're going to do or where they're going to be. But proactively, we're trying to get a spot where they can work on their cars and still fit into what we need in the future. And we don't know exactly what that future is. We played out a plan with Derek, but.
And we, we certainly respect the public comments and. Take those to heart and listen to them and, and seek them out wherever possible. I would point out, we also had a. A positive letter in our collaboration with the Police Department. And I would point out that we didn't. Publish anything seeking positive public comment for YOTech either. And I'm, I'm very confident that. We have plenty of positive public comment if, if we were seeking that out too.
So, so if after four years, you still don't have your master plan and, you know, the, to, to figure out where this needs to be. Then I would suspect Derek that, that this variance would come up again. With a, you know, what, what happened, what, what needs to happen going forward, another, they need another two years. And I would think that any reconsideration of the variance would be, would include, you know, how did these four years go? Um, what kind of, uh, community, uh, of opinion of it and whether there were, you know. Spills and things that just didn't, didn't seem right or that, that would be, you know, considered in the next variance.
Chair and Board of Adjustments. So if you look in the report and the staff report and the conditions there. It's, it's actually much more finite than that. In four years, the parking lot goes away. If YOTech chooses to do anything other than remove the park, the temporary storage lot, they would have to do another variance or. Build a code compliant, um. You know, temp, storage area, which I mean, you can do that. I mean, it's a legal use. Here, here's what I would say to that as well, is in four years, I would suspect. That the Planning Commission will ask those questions if they come back for a similar variance or something, right? I think that those would be appropriate. Um, also, whether I'm here or not in four years, yeah, I think that those would be appropriate things that staff's going to probably address is. Uh, YOTech is back making an additional request, maybe it's for more time or a smaller area or a bigger area or a different. Location or who knows, right? Really could be, it's really a brand new request, but I think we are going to look into. You know, did we get complaints? Have we had any issues? Was there something that we didn't anticipate? Like, that's just. Good practice, right? That's what, and so I think we would, that's what we would have in that report. I would also say, I think YOTech too, um, you know, our experience with YOTech is overall really well, really good. And so. Um, I would suspect that they probably would also champion their position, um, with support of. If things went well or didn't, or if they had suggestions to make it better, that they would probably propose those things themselves. So, um. Uh, and I think that's, you know, putting an end date is important in that. We are putting an end date to it so that we can revisit this.
Okay. Any other questions from Commissioners for the applicant, John?
I, I seriously applaud your, you know, attempts to try to deal with this. It sounds like you're trying to be some of the students for programs. I have a student interest because I can imagine some students. You know, throughout the, my, my program by myself. You know, do you think that most of them will be wanting to put their car in there and leave it there until the project time comes or?
So.
Not. And then it may, it's actually maybe not as important in terms of what we're talking about here, but I'm curious.
Yeah, yeah, they, they have, uh, they have been. The, the ones who bring a project really proactively, you know, we've, we've got that word out and, and those are going in there. The other thing that we've done that I would say to, to kind of support that from the more involuntary side of things, if we have. You know, quote unquote, a, a bad player or, you know, somebody that, that isn't interested in going in that lot. Uh, part of the, part of what we worked on with the Police Department is if we see. A vehicle that's sitting out there on Colorado or Venture and it's up on blocks or it's, you know, it's clearly inoperable. Against city code and, and part of where we started this discussion was. The Police Department. Through not enough resources or whatever, they, they just weren't able to, you know, go and. Tow vehicles all day from there or whatever they needed to do. And so what we do proactively is if we see a vehicle that's sitting out there for a period of days. That does not belong out there, that's inoperable. We're going to proactively find that student in class if at all possible through either a parking permit or a license plate. And we're saying that needs to go in the project lot by X date. And if it doesn't, we're going to call Sergeant Austin over at the Police Department. And tell him to go put one of those nice orange stickers on it for us and it, it's going to get towed and we don't, and. We gave you a warning. So like, please put it in the project lot or don't complain that it gets towed.
So they kind of don't have a choice to answer your question. It's either you put it in there or it gets towed because. We don't approve it. We don't like that perk on. The street anyway, but they move it there because they're not under our rules. They're out under the city and that's why we wanted to partner with the city when the Police Department called because. It's a, it's a constant battle.
And we, uh, we have our, our classes rotate on a weekly basis and go out and. Do some cleanups on those streets too. And so they get, kind of get a taste of, you know, if, if every week they have to go. Pick up piles and piles. It, it, it creates a little bit of self policing too. Like, I don't want to go clean up everybody's messes and so. Um, you know, they, they go out and do that and see that. And so. We, we have no interest in turning those streets into a junkyard either. We don't, we don't want it to look that way.
It's our campus. It's our facility and it's really a black eye when.
Yeah, you know, your community relations are huge, are very important, you know.
Very proud of our facilities. So it's really hard for us and it was great to work with everybody about trying to get a project lot that is a project lot. It's not a. Maintenance lot. It's not a parking lot. It's a project lot.
Well.
Thank you for your.
You.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm very much in favor of this. This makes a, a lot of sense. It's, it's probably a long time coming.
Yes, sir.
Uh, any other questions from Commission for the applicant? Okay, seeing, seeing none and, uh, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration.
Um, any public comment regarding this variance? Yes.
We have one online.
Okay.
Let's make a comment.
Kate Mur. Okay, hi.
Hello, I'm Brian Welch. Uh, I sent an email to you guys. I hope you all read it. Thank you. I live at 1883 Riverside Drive. Um, I received no notification from the city. Most of my neighbors probably don't even know about this. I would say that's probably why there's not more comment. There's no, there's nothing written that says that this is just going to be a storage area. You know, there's a lot of talk about it. Uh, locking the gate and such, but all, all we can go by. Is the present and the past. There's, as we sit here today, there's numerous junk cars on, on. Colorado Street and Venture Avenue. There's numerous, uh, spilled oil, trash, car parts. Um, YOTech has had, been, you know, this has been going on for years. You would think that YOTech would clean it up. If they're wanting to do this, they would clean it up a little bit to show that they, they. Care, but that's just not true. Um, I've got pictures if I could, if I could show some pictures. I've got pictures I took last Thursday when I sent. My email to you guys and you can see for yourselves or you can take a drive out there and see for yourself. Yeah. There's, there's nothing, there's nothing to show me that, that there's going to be any kind of, uh. Of oversight on YOTech's part because there has not been. And that there's going to be any enforcement on the city's part because there hasn't been over the last few years. And I've called the city numerous times, as have my neighbors. So thank you very much.
Yeah, okay.
I'll just add, um, that Brian is a graduate of YOTech, so he was proud of his time there. So this is not anti-YOTech. Per se, as much as it is the impact of YOTech on the neighborhood. Um, and, uh, I have worked with 18 through 22 year olds. I was a college professor for over 20 years at the University of Wyoming. I know it's difficult. But there has been a storage unit out in this field. For at least a year already and there's still trouble on Venture and Colorado Boulevards. So. It, it feels a little bit like what we see and what we experience. Has not been represented by the YOTech people nor by Derek. Um, in that it just feels like. Every time we hear you say something, we're like, but just drive down the street, live in that neighborhood. Um, and so it's a little bit disappointing that. That's the vibe that I'm getting from this particular meeting. Um, please, please reach out to our neighbors.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your, for your comments and the written statement. Commissioners, any, any comments, uh, for the public, the public comments?
Mr. Chair, I could, more for Derek. What? Is, uh, the city's capability of enforcing this variance? I know that I believe it would well, would work, but if it doesn't work, what is recourse does the city have?
Chair, Commissioner, uh, Chair and Board of Adjustments. So I think two things. So first off, if you look in your conditions of approval. Were really specific about what the use is. So if we see anything else going on there, that'd be a violation of the. Of the variance request if it was to be approved. Um, what the procedure is, is we would send a notice to YOTech. Um, you know, like I said, we're in correspondence with YOTech pretty regularly, so we have their phone numbers and stuff like that. Uh, but we would do a mailed notice is what we normally do and you're required to comply. Uh, with whatever gets approved, if anything is approved tonight. And then, uh. Eventually, what you get to is we would take somebody to court if they're not compliant. Um, the compliance is we can fine up to $750 a day per violation. So depending upon what exactly was occurring, um, on the site, that would be the potential penalty. Um, and so 750 a day per violation adds up pretty quick. So that's ultimately where it ends up. Uh, I'll tell you, when it comes to compliance, about 98% of the compliance that we see. Simple letter, people say, oh, I didn't know I shouldn't be doing that. Whatever the case of whether it's a variance or. Too tall a grass, um, and people come into compliance, but in this case, we would just work with YOTech, um. So.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I would think that this would improve this situation. Whether it solves it to, to everybody's satisfaction is, is to be determined, but it's, it's a, it's a. Positive step forward.
If I, if I made a follow-up.
Go, John.
Nowhere in the variance does it say that that is supposed to minimize the issue of cars on blocks, on streets. And adjacent to YOTech and less learning. Like, that's not a condition of the variance, right? That's a separate problem. The, the variance is about the use of the lot. It's appropriate if the car do not be turned on and off, right? That would be. A, a violation. Cars are being turned on and worked on. If people were coming and going constantly, it wasn't under lock, right? Like, what would constitute? It has nothing to do with the cars on the street, right?
Right.
Rectify that issue. That's a different city issue. So it's just important to remember those things aren't the same. But what would be a notice of violation would be like the things I'm talking, correct?
Chair, Commission, yeah, I, I think exactly what you're saying. So let's say the fence blows down. Kid runs into it, wrecks the fence off down. If we notice that, we, we would let them know. Um, if the, uh, screening goes away, we would let them know. If now there's a racetrack out there. Like they'd make another addition, expand the fencing, uh, change the fencing. Uh, modify the hours. Now it's, uh, now it's, and they can just go in there anytime they want. Um, if they choose to not just use it for storage, now it's a, they've, I don't know. They're storing pipes in there for future, the future development project. Anything like that, would it be permitted there? Um, those would be the violations that we would probably typically notice at this location. Um, like for instance, even too, there's some basic signage they're going to put out on Venture. Signs get ripped down, right? We would ask them to replace those signs. I mean, a lot of times we don't even do. We don't even do a violation in those cases. We just contact the property owner and say, you're, this part got broken. Sometimes they don't notice it. They go fix it. Um, if we need to do a violation, we would, so. Chair, if you wouldn't mind, just, I was just going to note, uh, we did send a notice to Brian Welch. We send notice to their registered information with the county assessors and their taxes. Uh, so we sent it to 602 South Sixth Street, Miami, Wyoming. So, um. There was another series of, I don't know, looks like 10 or so people maybe on Riverside. There's some of these addresses. I mean, I don't know where they live exactly, but they were P O boxes and stuff like that. So I mean. Just want to point that out. I always think it's important to note that we did get the notices out and we got them sent to people, so.
Okay. Donald, you have a question? I, I'm going to propose, uh, approval of this. I must say that.
I I'm going to propose uh approval of this. I must say that having, originally, I was going to vote against, uh, but I'm going to take uh YOTech at their word that uh they will get this done uh as quickly as possible and minimize minimize the inconvenience for neighbors. I just, uh, as I say, we'll take it on faith.
Okay. Any other comments from Commission?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Tom?
I move to approve the requested variance from multiple sections of LMC 1510, 1514, and 1518 to permit a temporary car storage area for YOTech up to four years based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and subject to the staff's recommended conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Donald? Any final discussion amongst Commission? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Evans is absent. Madamore?
Aye.
Isler White?
Aye.
O'Toole?
Aye.
Prusilik?
Aye.
Schneider, absent. And Moody?
Aye.
That is five yeses, zero nos, and two absents.
Okay, so variance approved. Good luck, gentlemen. Please do a good job.
Right on. Okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Board of Adjustment is adjourned.
You'll have to copy, right? Ah, him, Chris?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, you bet.